I would like to call the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for December 6th, for February 7th, 2013 to order. Can I get a roll call of members, please?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam, absent. Steve Timms.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Monica Duran.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the order of the agenda. I'm sorry, pledge of allegiance. Can't forget that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move for approval of the order of the agenda.
Second.
I have a first and a second on the approval of the agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, I will call for a vote then, please. And that vote is six in favor, one abstention.
Point of record, I don't think you can abstain on the agenda. You can abstain. It's not the newsletter, it's the agenda. It's what we're going to hear tonight.
Oh, sorry. Should I just change up? If that'll let you, I don't know if you might have to agree, she might have to reset before.
I think she...
Sorry about that.
Shall we call for a second vote, a revote?
Sure.
And that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for that catch. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from December 6th, 2012. And on that one, we'll entertain a motion. I move for approval of the minutes of the December 6th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion on that? All right, I will call for a vote, please. On that particular vote, that does pass five in favor with two abstentions, Commissioner Matthews, Commissioner Gildner. The next item is a public forum, a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda, and no one signed up tonight, so for the record, we have no one for that. So we will go right into our public hearings. We do have one case tonight. It is case number WZ-12-11, an application filed by James Frisk for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 2 to mixed-use neighborhood for the property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue. And is staff ready for a presentation on this case?
Where's the black screen? Here we go. Good evening. For the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WZ-12-11, application for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 2 to mixed-use neighborhood at 12390 West 44th Avenue. The applicant and owners are Janelle and James Frisk, and I would like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, the zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate noticing and publication requirements have been met, therefore, the commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So this first slide is a vicinity map. Picture was taken in 2012, and you can see the property that is under consideration outlined in light blue. North is to the top of the map, so the surrounding street system includes 44th Avenue, which the property is direct frontage to, and of course, then you've got Ward Road that intersects 44th, that is directly across the street from the property. This is a copy of the zoning map, and once again, the property is outlined in light blue. And it's really just the same aerial photo we looked at before, but with the zoning overlay. This particular property is located in northwest Wheat Ridge, and it has a variety of land uses and zoning that surround it. The green color that's designated on the map, which includes the property, designates agricultural 2, and you can see that some of the properties to the west and southwest have that designation. A couple of those properties are single-family residents, there's a cattery located on 44th, so that's the green color. To the southeast is yellow, and that designates some of the property along Vivian. Yellow designates R1 zoning, and those are single-family residents. The pink color that you're seeing designates C1 zoning, and directly to the east of the property is a gas station and convenience store. Across the street, you can see that there's some trailer sales and storage. And then directly northeast of the site, at the northeast corner of Ward and 44th, is the Long Shot's Bar and Grill, and the same owners own that as well as the subject property. Okay, this is just a little tighter view of the property. Again, you can kind of see a little bit better in the aerial, the improvements on the property. It is about 15,000 square feet in size and has a one-story, about 1,000-square-foot structure on it, which was originally built in 1946. The property owners have owned this land for a couple of years and have done quite a bit of improvements, and as part of the improvements, they were trying to accommodate a home occupation, and so did some improvements on the property, including paving of some of the parking. They also did some cosmetic improvements to the front of the building, and then also some accessibility improvements, including an accessible bathroom and a wheelchair ramp into it. On the very western side of the property is an access easement, which is part of the same ownership that provides access to the single-family residents down here to the south. And then access is up here, sort of just opposite, at the north end of the property. So let's take a look at some of the attributes of the property. These were actually taken this fall, so a little bit different season than we're having right now, but they're pretty good pictures. I was standing, or we were standing on 44th Avenue when this picture was taken, looking southeast towards, you can see the access point over here on the left-hand side, and then looking across the parking lot at some of the mature trees. Here's a straight-on shot of the building. And then this is intended to point out where that access easement runs, and then the access to that adjacent property owners through that gate back there. Looking east along 44th, and now we're looking west. And this picture, which is more recent, I took this last week, is standing at the curb cut for the property, looking north at the Ward Road intersection. You can see the big truck there, and how that impacts, comes right into the property, or looks like it does. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood. The intent of the mixed-use neighborhood is that it usually is established along neighborhood main streets and at neighborhood commercial centers. Again, it's to encourage sort of some mid-density mixed-use development, which includes residential uses, and again, some neighborhoods serving retail and commercial uses. What we're looking at here is a little comparison of the two zonings, the existing A2 zoning. Really, the only uses that are allowed are as a single-family residence, a single-family residence with an in-home business, and then some various farming uses. The height limitation is 35 feet, as are all our residential zone districts, and there are no particular architectural standards for any buildings in the A2 zone district. We would even allow metal construction, metal buildings to be built in A2. The architectural and site design manual doesn't apply to it. The mixed-use neighborhood zoning also would allow residential from single-family up through some higher density, but it would also allow commercial uses or a mix of both, maybe some live-work units. Again, the height limitation is the same as the ag zoning of 35 feet, but we have quite a bit more architectural control. If there were to be new construction on the site, they would have to meet the standards in the architectural, or excuse me, in the mixed-use zoning, and that addresses setbacks and facades and all those other things that were interested when we look at new construction. As far as the process goes, we did have a neighborhood meeting back in December. We had four folks in attendance from the neighborhood. There was one gal who was on Vivian. The couple who lived to the south, who used that access easement, were in attendance, and there was someone else. There was somebody else over from Xenon Street. In general, we discussed the zone change process, the permitted uses, and then there was quite a bit of discussion about maintenance of that existing access easement, the property owner, and that those folks who lived back there came to an agreement about how it was going to be maintained and to try to ensure that, you know, parking wouldn't occur in that area, there would be some signage put up and so on. We did go through a complete referral process and did not get any concerns from any of the agencies. With this proposal, they're proposing no changes to the property, okay? If at some time in the future, they decide to either come in and add on or do a scrape, they would have to go through a new construction review as part of our administrative site plan approval process, and then again, meet all the mixed-use standards for landscaping, parking, so on. This is a picture, it's blurry, and that bothers me a little bit, but I'll try to talk about it anyway. This is a picture of the location of the site from the structure plan in the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. There's kind of a lot going on there, so I tried to label what some of the highlights are. The property is located sort of right in this location, and when you look at this picture, the first thing that you see is kind of this wagon wheel thing, and that designates that it's a gateway into the city of Wheat Ridge, not only from Ward, but also I-70 east and westbound. The pink dots designate 44th Avenue as being a commercial corridor. This brownish color, which is where the property is located, designates neighborhood buffer, and then this yellow south of that shows existing neighborhood. The proposed zone change to MUN will allow for a wider range of uses on the property, and we're hoping that encourages investment in the area, and maybe we see some additional of those properties along 44th perhaps do the same thing. We think the property is currently underutilized with just the two uses that's allowed, the single-family resident or the farming. And so by zoning to MUN, obviously, it's going to open up and allow the property owners some better use of the site. Let's see, the property is also located within the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Area. Again, that is one of the guiding documents, and it also encourages changes that will allow for investment in property and to allow some additional uses for those that are currently underutilized. Let's see what else. One other note, the comp plan calls for an improved mix of uses in transitional areas, and we think that this would provide a good neighborhood buffer between, you know, the heavy traffic on 44th and the low-density neighborhood to the south. So staff is recommending approval of the request. We've drawn the following conclusions based on the criteria we use to do an evaluation. First of all, we've concluded that the zone change is consistent both with envisioned Wheat Ridge and the I-70 Kipling Corridors Urban Renewal Plan. We've concluded that, you know, there's quite a variety of land uses and zonings in the area, and that we think that the zone change will be compatible and possibly serve as a neighborhood buffer. We've concluded that the property is currently underutilized, and that increasing the potential land use options through zone change will be for a benefit for the city and also might serve as a catalyst for other improvements along the 44th Avenue corridor to the west. And finally, we've concluded that the proposed zone change will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare. So that would conclude the staff comments. I would be happy to answer questions at this time, and the applicant is in the audience.
Thank you for that presentation. We'll now take questions from the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Ohm, any questions?
Yes, I have two. One is, Meredith, could you refresh my memory? Is there another mixed-use neighborhood property rezoned to the east along 44th?
There is one. Actually, the closest one is at 44th and Tabor. That was the RB America property you're thinking of, and in that situation, it was quite a bit bigger site, it was like two and a half acres, and it's mixed-use interstate, mixed-use commercial interstate on the north half and mixed-use neighborhood on the south half.
Okay. And then, I understand this isn't being developed right now, but would the access easement accommodate any required landscape buffers on the west side?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duran, any questions? Commissioner Brinkman?
I have two questions. Were there any historical planning cases before the city on this property that would help make some decisions on this? Did you find any?
No, but the applicant and I were talking before, right before the meeting, and the property, before they bought it, was an old house with a weed patch for a yard and a horse tied up to the fence. Okay, is that better? And there really have been no zone change on the property, at least that I'm aware of.
Okay. No cases? No pertinent cases? Okay. And the second question is, based on the size of the lot, based on the required buffers, based on the strip for access, how big of a building could feasibly be put on here with parking if it's a mixed use?
You know, not very big. If you look at the way the width of the property is, we don't have a lot of width, we've got some better depth, but, you know, it's hard for us to be able to do that since we don't use an FAR. Right off the bat, they'd have to meet 15% landscaping, so that's taking out the strip along the west, and then 15% on the rest. And then to accommodate parking, I would say maybe a couple thousand square feet, maybe 3,000.
Okay.
I mean, they could go up probably another story if they had, you know, an office on the bottom and an apartment on the top, but it just, the site isn't big enough. The other thing that was a concern at the neighborhood meeting is people, you know, the MUN allows some drive-through uses, you know, and the folks are going, "Well, we don't want a McDonald's," you know, "at this location," and, you know, frankly, it wouldn't, the property's not big enough to accommodate anything like that. So there's sort of just a natural elimination of a lot of the uses based on how big this thing is.
And since you brought it up, if they popped, if they went up, they, reading this and looking through my book, if 50 feet, they could go to 50 feet for any, the building if it's commercial, correct?
The mixed-use neighborhood is, I believe, limited to 35 feet.
It says 50 feet for all other buildings.
Am I reading that wrong, Lauren?
I think it's 50 feet if it's all commercial.
If it's all commercial.
If it's all commercial, okay. 35, if there's any residential, right.
If there's any residential, it's 35 feet.
It's the same standard that we have, for example, for the restricted commercial zone district.
Okay, okay.
Thanks for that correction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Matthews, no questions? Commissioner Gildner, any questions? Mr. Weaver, any questions?
I just have one question for staff. What type of home occupation requires that much paving and parking?
It was somewhat of a process that we went through. As I indicated, when they originally got the property, it was very unmaintained, and it was a maintenance problem for them. I would concur with you that that was probably overkill on the amount of asphalt that was put down, but I think it was also a maintenance issue for the owner.
Because almost driving by now, it almost looks like a commercial property.
It does.
I mean, for the average, I think, for the untrained user. Okay, great, thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. If you want to come forward, and please state your name and address for the record, and then anything you want to add or a presentation, anything like that is fine.
My name's Janelle Frisk, and I live at 5680 Youngfield Street in Urbana, and I'm representing, obviously, as the homeowner, at 12390 West 44th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. Oh, taller. So I would just like to say at this time, kind of reiterate what Meredith said, we don't have any plans in the near future, actually, far out at that point either, to change the building. I mean, we've already invested a lot of money, a lot of time into the property, kind of done the things that we want to do as far as renovations. We're just really looking to change the zoning on this from agricultural to MUN to allow us to lease the property to someone who wanted to do some type of a small, smaller business in there. For instance, maybe like an accounting firm, an attorney, hair salon, something like that. So we have no desires to put a Starbucks drive-through or McDonald's or anything else at the property. And like Meredith also said, we own the property across the street, a Long Shot's Bar and Grill, so we're invested in the city of Wheat Ridge, we're invested in the area. We live, you know, we live just right up the street off of Ward Road, and I think it would be, I think it would be better served as an MUN property rather than, you know, residential or agricultural. We have no need for agricultural, and as you can see from the large parking lot and the traffic that is in that area, it's not really well-served as a residential property either. So we've had a lot of issues trying to find somebody to go into the property that would want to live, I mean, I wouldn't want to live there. So we're just trying to do something that would better serve the property and potentially a business owner.
Great, thank you. Let's see if there's any questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Ohm, no questions? Commissioner Duran? For the applicant, okay. Commissioner Brinkman?
If this passes, have you considered where you would put the sign for the business if they moved in?
Well, there is a strip that is landscaped right on 44th Avenue. I would say that it's between, it's probably around 10 to 12 feet from the sidewalk that runs on 44th Avenue to where the asphalt starts in that parking lot. And that, I mean, obviously, there's signage coding, or, I'm sorry, permitting and certain requirements, but that would be where we would want the sign. I mean, obviously, we want some visibility to the traffic volume on 44th and coming off of Ward Road. And I don't know exactly what the signage requirements are, but I know that they're pretty strict. I mean, I don't think we could put a huge, you know, neon sign out there that would be a big eyesore. We would keep it something within, you know, that would be good with the area. We've kept, we've kept the property, you know, to the historical side of it. We didn't do a lot of changes. It's still got, it has the old windows and things like that, so we want to put something that fit the area and fit the property, so.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, I went by the property, it looks very nice. Yeah.
Commissioner Gildner, any questions? Commissioner Weaver? I have no further questions as well, thank you. Normally, at this time, we would open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this application. For those that are watching, there is no one in the audience, so we will not have anyone else speaking. Are there any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Commissioner Brinkman?
Following on on my signage question, they would, the property owner, if this passed, when looking at signage, would fall under our current signage?
Well, there's, the mixed-use has their own signage.
Requirements.
Requirements, and so there are limitations based on which zone it's in. Lauren has turned to the, do you want to, oh, sorry.
So the sign code would apply, but there's just a few extra conditions in mixed-use neighborhoods. So for example, no pole signs, has to be a monument sign.
Good.
Limited to seven feet in height, and changeable copy, flashing, and LED signs are not permitted in the MUN zone district.
Okay, thanks.
I think you'd be able to have a wall sign as well.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I just, if this passes, obviously, the next step is to be able to show that the business can advertise in some way, so I just wanted to understand, especially with the straight-on of Ward Road right there, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain any discussion among the commissioners, or if there's no discussion, any motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-12-11. I request for approval of a zone change from agricultural-2 to mixed-use neighborhood for a property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan in the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Number two, the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will serve as a neighborhood buffer between existing commercial and residential uses to the south and southeast. Number three, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Number four, the subject property is currently underutilized, and a zone change will increase the permitted uses of the site.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote then. That particular motion does pass, seven to zero, and this particular case is scheduled for City Council when? Has it been scheduled yet?
Oh, we have to read it. So I think it's March 23rd. Yeah, March 23rd.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate seeing where that property goes. Our next item on the agenda is a, we have two items up. We have a study session and then a resolution to approve. And my understanding is from the study session, it's not so much a study session more than just a quick update.
Right.
Right? With selected feedback, so.
Let me go ahead and put the screen up.
We essentially, since the, before my time really, with the neighborhood revitalization strategy, that was one of the city's first sort of big stepping into comprehensive planning and looking at how we can shape Wheat Ridge to be the city that the community wants to have. And several code amendment recommendations came out of the NRS in 2005, and there was a pretty aggressive series of code amendments that were coming through the next few years after that. And my understanding is we've slowed down a little bit with our code amendments, so we went back to the drawing board and sort of looked at the list of what we've done and what we haven't done. And we prioritize them a little bit in our eyes, but we wanted to come to Planning Commission and see if our idea of priorities matched your idea of priorities before we sort of launch headlong into research and recommendations. So this memo summarizes a little bit about that background and then outlines the first five proposed code amendments. As the commission is aware, some of these take a little bit more time than others, some will take a little bit more public input than others. But what we were presenting as 2013 priorities would be updating the subdivision regulations and the sign code, which are two pretty big undertakings. Each of those comprise a full article within Chapter 26. And then our sort of mid-range proposed code amendments would be related to accessory dwelling units, microbrews, and exterior lighting standards, which are somewhat less ambitious than those first two.
And just to add on to that, you know, every year, we come up with a current planning sort of work program. So we start to look at our workload, look at the cases coming in, and, you know, consider feedback we've gotten from commission. I know we've talked about some of these different, these different topics over the last couple of years, and so then we start to finalize it down into a work program. So this is what we've identified. And just to chime in and add on to Lauren, the other, the third one that we've got on the list, which is accessory dwelling units, is also going to be a huge issue and might be very controversial. So we're focusing on the other two first, and then might have to get some buy-in from council about whether they want to try to tackle these accessory units, not even, not just allowing new ones, but also legitimizing old ones. That's a big part of the problem we've got here in the city. Weekly, we get calls from people about, you know, the granny flat in their basement that we never issued permits for. So again, some political discussion on that one. You know, the subdivision regulations, and chime in here, as you work with them, our original subdivision regulations was approved in, or adopted in 1972. We've gone, you know, you go through a series of changes, but really, the regulations we're operating on are the old 1950s, 1970s sort of, you know, suburban type of subdivision regulations. We don't meet a lot of the new standards for kind of what you see for more urban development. The other thing that we think we need to do is loosen up this staff's ability to approve some of this stuff administratively. If they're not coming in and plating a 50-lot subdivision, they're just trying to switch and swap property between two property owners, do we really need to put them through a public hearing? So, you know, there's a list of things we're going to tackle, but those are a couple of Need to be revisited is the parkland dedication issue. Anytime we have a residential subdivision that comes in, there's a requirement that we look at for parkland needs. Well, you know, the land we're subdividing here really is not big enough to have a developer dedicate a park site on it. And so it usually ends up being fees in lieu of, and just hasn't been a very smooth application of that requirement. So what else, Lauren, on sub regs?
A lot of the review of subdivisions, as you know, when you see them come through public hearings, there's a lot of technical review, and most of that is done through our Public Works Division, our Development Review Engineer. And as those technical requirements sort of change and the language of surveying gets updated and our city datum gets updated, we just want to make sure that the code that's in Chapter 26 is consistent with what the engineers are expecting to see when they get subdivision plots. So just some cleanup too in that respect, making sure all of our definitions are there. I think sometimes it helps, some of our code sections have purpose statements, and I think it helps citizens when they're reading through this to understand why we have some of these requirements. So maybe adding a few of those in the subdivision code. I think that's mostly everything.
Yeah, so, any thoughts? Typically, a subdivision approval is what we would call like a non-discretionary approval from Planning Commission. It's not like a zone change where you've got criteria that you're weighing, oh, the neighborhood input, and does it meet the density? Does it meet the, is it consistent? If you have a subdivision plot that comes before you, they either meet the requirement or they don't. And so, you know, it's like you can't start dickerin' and redesigning and adding conditions. So it's really, it's really a lot of times more of a technical document. So thoughts, questions?
Any thoughts on that particular topic from the commissioners? Go ahead, we're good with it? All right?
We did outreach with the business owners. A lot of times, the sign code issues are also controversial because we all know we need them, but a lot of times, a small property owner really doesn't have a lot of money to invest in new signage, and it just can be controversial. The current code, too, doesn't meet a lot of the new standards. It doesn't address LED signs. It doesn't address ways to measure light that's emitted from LED signs. What else? Oh, we don't have the, we don't address the waving man. What else, Lauren?
The sign spitters. Yeah, essentially, as we all know, sign technology is advancing much faster than our codes can keep up, so it might be time for another review. And signs make up such a huge portion of sort of the aesthetics of a community, so it's important finding that fine line between helping to promote the businesses that we have, but also balancing that with the visual clutter that signs can sometimes create. So it'll be a collaborative effort with all of the very interested parties that we know are out there, but it's probably time.
Go ahead, Anne.
So, yes, it's near and dear to my heart.
I know it is.
A couple of things. Whatever is brought forth needs to be supported by the community, what are we calling them? Community services team.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Right now, I think that either they're stretched too thin, or don't they only go onsite and on a complaint effectively? I mean, I drove around after I got my packet, drove around 44th, and I just used 44th as an example, and with my little, my coat in front of me, and I saw a number of flagrant violations. And so I don't know where we come in between of trying to write a good sign code and make something that's manageable and policeable, so to speak. But I want something, as you said, it drives the aesthetics of the community. What I, yeah, so I just, I want that out there, that we need to have something that you can patrol, manage, without, with, yeah, without, yeah, without, yeah, without coming down too hard, but there's got to be some limits on the, I mean, these temporary signs are not temporary after two and three and four years. It's just kind of crazy. The sign becomes part of the building.
For, I don't want to say all, for people, but folks who are on the board or the commission,
Smaller businesses rely on banners for a cheap form of advertisement. They don't have to invest $10,000 and have a footing designed and engineer and win loads. They can throw a banner up. Should we allow those? Should we not allow those? We dickered back and forth. We used to have this real complicated way that, one, a business could have a banner for a special event, but they had to come in for a permit, and then they could only be for 30 days. And then so not only did it not effectively work for what they were trying to do, which was cheap advertisement, it also became a nightmare for staff. We don't want to write a, well, I mean, that's why we have code enforcement. We don't want the planners out there going, okay, they're on day 29, should, you know. So that, that's.
And then we see with the small business owners, what we ended up doing with the 2005 rewrite is to say each business can have one, all its products, and it can only be half the size of the, of the wall sign. Now, I don't know if that's effective.
Well, I'm, it's, it's effective, but not to throw any business under the bus, Burger King had a banner on the side where you drove up. It effectively disintegrated, but there were the pieces of it still hanging on the side of the building years later. I had to, I had to actually go through, drive-through and ask the manager to come and stick his head outside the window and look. I don't think he'd ever, I don't think he even knew that there was a remnants of a banner sitting there with the white PVC holding it up. So that's what I'm saying, there's got to be some, yeah, the maintenance of it is as important as anything else.
And I, I think, and Meredith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but council sets sort of strategic goals each year or every period of time, and on their list of things to consider is commercial property maintenance. So we're hoping that what the priorities that they set and the sign code amendments can sort of go hand in hand. So we're not trying to stall on sign code, but we can get this nexus of priorities at the same time. It would be probably most effective.
One other thing, sorry, this is my passion here because I needed the city to look good. So are, in all of this, I didn't see the word grandfather. So are we, is the goal to have some sort of time limit where the existing signs become compliant?
Well, back then, it's a huge, a huge political decision that impacts a lot of the small businesses.
And large?
And large businesses. Typically, amorti, let's say amortization periods have been pretty unpopular here in the city of Wheat Ridge. I don't know if that political bent has changed or not, but again, that would be a big enforcement thing. It's like, hey, by X number of years, now you have to meet the sign code. I anticipate a lot of pushback, but that's one of the things we need to discuss. I think that's up for discussion as well. The other thing that we need to be aware of is, you know, 38th Avenue, we've got this good mojo going down there with all this great energy, and it's likely that 38th Avenue's going to have its own regulations for signs, okay? Which, you know, it's kind of like the mixed-use, we've got the sign code, but then you've got mixed-use, and we're going to have 38th Avenue, which probably will have some of its own design standards, just to make sure there's some consistency and some, you know, themes in our, let's say, architectural consistency. One of the other things that was really unpopular the last time is, this gets my goat, when I drive down the street and it's, you know, driving home from the movie theater and it's midnight, and everybody's signs are on, but they sure aren't open. And so that was one of my big deals, is trying to be sensitive to dark skies and all that stuff. And I tried to write in there that when a business is closed, they turn the sign off. And it was, again, very unpopular with the small businesses. Those are the kind of things that, I mean, people know really strongly about. And do you really think that someone driving down 38th Avenue, 38th Avenue, is going to come back because they saw your sign come back up and buy a bike on Sunday? I mean, I don't know.
I have a couple thoughts. If you, okay. I have a couple thoughts. I think, I think that your, the staff has did an incredible job on 38th as far as getting the public involved. Here's what, kind of what we're doing. Let's have an input process. Let's think about it and constantly moving forward. I think that whole process seemed to get more people on board. And I think with the sign code, I think there should be some, I don't know that it has to be to that degree, but there should be something where like, okay, we have some ideas, we're going to have some public meetings, involve the public, especially the businesses, and say like, this is what we're thinking, this is why, and to try to get us to that center of this is what we really want to do. As far as the setting a timeline on when that sign could be done, I agree, that could be tough, but I think you could do this, you could do something maybe similar that you did on 38th with some of the properties that were legally non-conforming, where maybe you, you know, you apply that same philosophy to the sign and say, okay, this is a legally non-conforming sign, as long as it, you know, if it says, you know, Smith's, you know, park benches, that's fine. But if it ever changes, then it has to be all brought to code, you know? And so that way, there's no hardship on those people, but if it ever gets sold to another business, they can't just simply just change it to a different one. They got to, it's got to be brought to compliance.
And again, that's a monitoring thing with the staff. And again, that's, that's a monitoring thing with staff.
I think, I think it would be beneficial to, to maybe pull in some, there's some really good sign makers, and maybe pull those in, when the timing's right, and just say, "Hey, we'd like to have some of your feedback on," especially when it comes down to trying to determine what the luminosity, the, how much foot candles a sign is putting out, like, you know, where's, you know, you could probably find some examples and say, "Well, that one definitely doesn't work. This one looks nice." And you could ask them for examples, and they could say, "Yeah, I recommend," and they would give you the technical aspect of it.
That's another big piece. Be in favor of that? I like your idea about outreach to the different stakeholders, but maybe not a focus group is the right word. I'm sure. Yeah, I'm not sure, but like a standing group who has representatives from the business community, a task force, a task.
I don't know, though, because the buy-in, I think, is so important. I mean, I think people don't realize, I certainly don't, even until a lot of the things that have been brought up here, as far as what I'm seeing in a landscape versus what it looks like to see a different kind of signed landscape, right? We're all so culturally attuned to certain environments. And when I drive down Wadsworth, it just sort of goes into my lizard brain of, oh, well, that's just how it is. But you go to a community where it's signed differently, and you do notice. And I think, I think a lot of us aren't, unless you happen to, to really know the effect of some of these things, I think it would really help to have more education about, about signs, because I think people really do care about signs, they just don't know they care about them, you know? Like, like them being turned off, like, wow, I didn't even realize that was an option, that signs could be turned off at night. I mean, I know that sounds silly, but it's just an attribute of where I grew up and things like that. So, anyway, I agree with the outreach about it.
Is there any type of incentive that we offer the small businesses, or just the owners along 38th, 44th, to help with signage? There's available, the Wheat Ridge Business Association, that's monitored through our, towards our coming year, administered by Wheat Ridge 2020. So, there's some grants that are available for signage landscaping and spot improvements. Of course, that's kind of more of a target area along 38th Avenue, but we don't really have a lot of incentives.
I need to do a blatant self-promotion on that, that, that is actually the Wheat Ridge Business District that administers all of those grant programs. And basically, the city, through the business district, is partnering with a lot of the businesses, that we do matching grants to help businesses update their signs, bring them into compliance. And we have an additional level of grants for monument signs versus just rehabbing the vinyl and old pole signs and stuff like that. We are attempting to, you know, partner with the business community and do that. And actually, I was at a meeting today, and the sign code was a topic of discussion, particularly the sign code on a vacant lot on 38th Avenue, that, that sign has to be removed because it's a vacant lot. And that was, that was the topic of a big discussion today. But the city actually is doing a very good job of partnering with the businesses in, in trying to get the signage updated.
I just have two comments. One is, signage is also near and dear to my heart, so I agree with Commissioner Brinkman on this. I don't see billboards on here in particular, I assume they would be covered. CBS may not be happy with that, but.
I think we would have to have a billboard separately. There's, we've got some pretty strict rules about the number and allocation of the board companies when we have to try to reduce the number of them. So, at the same.
You think it'd be a separate topic? Okay. So, I would just be clear about, if that's the case, just, we should just be clear about it, that they're, be covered separately.
So, I said, roof first.
Yeah, yeah, all the casino ones, yeah. And then, some things, I know that, maybe some, some old signs that were once in vogue, and a lot of municipalities took them out, and they may be back in vogue again, things like roof-mounted signs, I know at one time, or 100 years ago, were, right, were popular, and now they're coming back in Denver, right, linger, and, and more paint, and things like that, right? Those are, those can be cool in certain settings. And I know as our city transitions in some areas from more suburban to more urban, maybe that would be appropriate. Same thing with, with blade signs projecting over the right-of-way and things like that, especially on maybe 38th. So, maybe, maybe a one-size-fits-all's not, not the right approach for Wheat Ridge, and so maybe key corridors or key areas where there may be, I don't know, different, different opportunities may be appropriate, so.
I'll make sure I turn my mic on. Lakewood, you know, along the Colfax corridor has identified protected signs, some of the old 50s, some of the hotel, old hotels, as being protected, which is a little bit different than what Steve's saying, but I, yeah, that's right.
Another thing, and this is just, was reminded, so certain businesses are starting to use their trucks that are parked next to their buildings as, I don't even know what to call that. I mean, they, they're allowed for free advertising. I mean, American Furniture drives around town with their trucks, but I, it's, it's an interesting concept, because some of those trucks may be used as, what do you call, for lunch trucks, type, yeah, food trucks. It's almost, so, it's another concept of a truck. I mean, anything and everything is being used to advertise now, so, just.
In fairness to Apple Jacks, I believe they move their truck every day, the one they park on Young Field. But there are some trucks parked along Kipling that are actually up on blocks. I don't think they have ever been moved. There was one that I complained about, and they took it off of blocks for a short time, but I believe it's back up on blocks again.
Any additional comments for staff on this particular issue?
I'm not sure.
I think, I think the last thing I want to say is just string lights. I'm not necessarily against, against string lights. I think in some settings, they can look very tasteful, but they, you know, there's.
You're saying lighting is covered, is the signage?
Yeah, like, so, I don't, are displays covered under the sign code?
No, I don't think they are. And we don't really regulate, you know, like you see, you see the bars with the party lights that get put up, that, they really do serve as some sort of attention-getter. The other one we see once in a while is somebody will put neon along their roof line, and that's kind of like using lighting as signage. So, again, another interesting way that people draw attention to their businesses.
The one last thing I thought of, too, that cities wrestle with is murals. Sometimes murals can be public art, right? Sometimes they can be graffiti, sometimes they can be advertising a business. So, they're somewhat hard to regulate, or really hard to regulate, but.
They are, and the way the sign code currently works is that you can have a mural, but it can't like have any branded information, or, you know, you could probably have the side of a brew pub with two guys with a mug of beer, but, you know, it is a fine line. Any thoughts on that, Lauren? Okay. Today was incredibly busy, and we're seeing cases come in. So, we'll have to kind of target and come up with some timelines as far as, you know, working through and setting up a schedule. Now, I guess in my mind, you guys probably don't care quite as much about subdivision regulations as you do signs, so do you think that sign code is probably the, the most, yeah, the one that, I sure don't want it to take another three years, but to me, it seems like it's probably of the most immediate concern from the commission? Is that a correct thing, Lauren?
Accessory dwelling units would be chewy, too.
Yes, well.
Especially after the case that we heard a couple, two, three months ago, with a number of people in the house that are, that are relatives. I, it, I think that's good, I, when I read this, that I, that's the first thing I thought So, that, that's gonna be interesting with that one, that's gonna be chewy, too.
Like I say, before we would work with. With, with the subdivision regulations, I know Lauren's been compiling, she's got a notebook like that, and, I mean, that would be an easier one to do, because it's really more of a technical thing, so is that more important? Or should we just like, you know, get that done and cross it off the list, or what do you think?
I think they're all important. I think you should do the one that, the low-hanging fruit. So, if you have a lot of work already done on subdivision, and it helps Lauren achieve her performance objectives, and gets her a checkmark at the end of the year, then go for it.
Do we have any future subdivision cases coming up?
Ooh. Chewy. Very chewy. It's a 53-lot subdivision out on 38th Avenue, scheduled for February 21st public hearing. We've got that. And then we also have a two-lot subdivision up on Robb Street.
Which, of course, the upcoming subdivision is actually, our current subrags are really appropriate for that, right? Because our current subrags are for Greenfield, large, mini-lot residential developments. We keep, I started doing a little research on subdivisions, maybe two years ago, but it's so boring and so non, you know, controversial that.
Sexy, non-sexy.
We just keep kicking that one down the road a little, but that when it does come up, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but I just thought of it, is a lot of our infill subdivisions. So, for example, when we try to subdivide Town Center North at 44th and Wadsworth, it's infill, it's commercial, it's own mixed-use. The easement language requires 10-foot easements, but we have build two. So, there's just a lot of inconsistencies. So, it's not, it's not pretty, and it's not exciting, but I think it's gonna help us with these infill properties, and as people are maybe consolidating a couple of lots on 38th or on Wadsworth. You may not notice the change once we finally make them, but I think it will make it a little bit easier. And just from a staff resources, I think sign code is gonna take more than, typically, we have one person sort of shepherd a code amendment through, and sign code will probably take a little bit more of a hand, all hands on deck approach, so.
Yeah, the staff feel like they can, they can work on subdivisions and sign codes this year? I mean, that's kind of what you laid out for short-term, okay?
If we can, I would say it depends on caseload.
Sure.
And then, well, like you say, if we can do anything, we go to council, that's where the next step is.
Okay, that's fair.
And, and kind of see what their thoughts are on that as well.
Okay.
Has Planning Commission heard that 53-unit subdivision before?
We heard the zone change piece of it in 2007, so.
So, on the code amendments, I think we will, then, we're, we're in favor of, of your proposal, so, the subdivision, the signing, and then these three long-term ones, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. So, we do have one final item on, on the agenda tonight. We do have a resolution designating a public place for posting of notices of public meetings. And does staff have any, just any comments on this?
No.
Okay. Do we need to, do we need to vote on this, then? Okay. Any, any discussion on this particular resolution? This is found at the very end of your packets. All right, so with that, then I'll, I'll entertain then a motion for approval of this resolution. Okay.
I recommend approval of resolution number one, series of, resolution number one, series of 2013, a resolution establishing a designated public, public place for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law.
Second.
First and second on that. Any discussion on that resolution motion? All right, let me call for vote, please. That particular resolution does pass 7-2-0.
Meredith, I have one last thing, real quick, under, I'm still noticing that old city council signs, posted signs are, and Planning Commission signs are on properties that have been long passed. The latest one I saw was next, the property next to Advanced Auto on 38th.
Oh, on that?
On, yeah. It's still there, the city council sign. And I thought we were gonna try to take them down within two weeks. I had raised it because it causes confusion.
It is.
Yeah.
I kept on a mission for a while.
I know. So, I'm, I'm picking up your mission.
One, one final thing, as, do you want to hand those to Scott? We want to cordially invite you to the first public input meeting of the Northwest Subarea Plan Update, which is next Tuesday, the 12th, at the REC Center from 5:30 to 7:30. The Northwest Subarea Plan was, I think, approved in 2006, if I'm not right, and there's just a lot of, it's time to refresh in that document, there's a lot of changed conditions up there that were not, obviously not addressed in the old plan, so it is an open house with some working groups. We're hoping we get some interested property owners to attend, and we would invite you all to do it as well, so.
Thank you for that. I do have one last question for staff on the, this time of year, there's some openings on the boards and commissions. Can you just give us an update on where we stand with Planning Commission on this, please?
Sure, we had three members, three members' appointments come up. Scott Ohm, Alan Bucknam, and Dick Matthews. Scott and Alan went ahead and reapplied. And Dick, I guess I'll let you talk a little bit about what you're feeling. You've been such a great member of this commission, Anne.
I know city council was discussing term limits for boards and commission members, so I took it upon myself to self-limit.
It didn't go through. So, we will, as of March, we will have an opening in District 3. And, so if you know anyone, both the council persons from that district have been notified, so hopefully they are getting something going. But we always like to have a full board, so.
Thank you for that update. Any other staff business or board business before we make a motion to adjourn? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. This is what you need.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, first and second, call for a vote, please. And that vote, I assume Commissioner Gilner is an affirmative on that?
I, it was buzzing.
There you go, okay. That motion does pass. We are adjourned.